Good evening. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Vice Chair Chicalini, would you please lead?
Yes, Madam Chair. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I would first like to welcome my fellow board members. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
And good evening to our Town Manager, Scott Crabtree, and our Clerk Meredith. Ladies and gentlemen in the audience and those watching at home. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. The first item on the agenda is a citation for Alex Peppagallo for winning an honorable mention for his PSA poster designed for the Mass Partnership for Youth. And you can see this poster right here. I'll hold it up.
And it's about community. And we'd like to congratulate Alex and his family.
And if Alex and his family would please come to the podium for just a few words. Friends as well. Good evening.
Good evening.
Would you like to tell us a little bit about the poster contest?
Well, I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Basically, my inspiration for the poster was basically, I wanted to basically spread just the message of community and you, community and of course unity, which is inside the word of community, united as a whole. So I didn't really want to do anything specific, like be preachy about it, like being preachy about a negative subject. I wanted to be definitely a whole lot of positivity into my design there.
Well, I think you did a phenomenal job. I'm going to let each one of my fellow selectmen say a few words. Selectman Riley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's a beautiful poster. Congratulations, and you worked really hard on it, and we're all proud of you.
Thank you.
Selectman Serena?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. And Alex, I'm certainly proud of you. You're a great talent. You did a great job on the poster, and you're certainly an asset to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Selectman Cardiano?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I just want to thank you. It's a great piece of work that you did, and it's a pleasure meeting you, and best of luck in the future.
Thank you. And then Selectman Vice Chair Chicalini?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I echo all the comments that have already been said. We're really proud of you. This is quite an amazing accomplishment, and I'm hoping we can find a nice way to show, to display his excellence and the message that it sends. I think it's, we need more people like you in town that are spreading the word about community and unity.
Why, thank you. Thank you, sir.
We have a citation for you, Alex. The citation reads, "Town of Saugus Citation: To All Persons Whom These Presents Shall Come. Being known that on this day, May 20th, 2025, the Town of Saugus recognizes Alex Peppagallo for being chosen as honorable mention for his design and the community, and with unity in all capital letters, poster project for the Mass Partnership for Youth." And it's signed by all five of the selectmen with a seal. We're going to now stand up, take a picture with you if it's okay with you and your family. The second piece of correspondence is the Lions Club requesting a permit to operate a can drive on June 7th, 2025. I see some Lions Club members in the audience.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi.
Good evening.
Anthony Spiziali, President of the Saugus Lions Club. And we also have Peter Rosetti, Batty Fiero, and Mike Murphy, also of the Saugus Lions. So I want to thank, I want to thank yous all for giving us a chance to meet. We are here to request permission for our canning drive, which is slated for June 7th from the hours of 6:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. I believe that's what the permit, permit states. So with our canning drivers, this is one of our major fundraisers every year. And with our fundraising, 100% of our fundraising efforts goes to the community and also goes to eye research, with the goal is to end blindness and to end all related, eye-related diseases. So with that said, we realize that canning is not, that canning does have its risks. However, we do take the precautions every year when we do the can drive. And this is to protect not only us, but hopefully, and hopefully to present, prevent accidents. In our 20-plus years we have done this, we've never had an incident nor had an accident. So just a couple of things, what we do. Peter Rosetti here is modeling. We wear, we wear the vest that's a neon sign, so you really can't miss it. And then our, our tool, our tool aprons, which we put our postcards in to give out the information.
Wait, postcards and tootsie rolls?
What's that?
Postcards and tootsie rolls.
Uh, that was, no, we don't do tootsie rolls anymore. We used to do lionments.
The dentists in town, I thought they were the ones who paid for them.
Yeah, exactly, to get more business. But yeah, we also have an A-frame. Now, this one was our toy drive from a couple of years ago, but we have interchangeable signs that just puts in big letters, "Canning Drive for Eye Research." We have about a dozen of these, and then along with many, many, many of those construction cones, so we kind of like build our own little cage, our own little protection. So therefore, we do seek, we do seek and emphasize safety. So that's why we're here, and I thank yous for listening to us.
I have two questions. The first is, can you just confirm again the hours?
Oh, yeah.
I thought you said 6:00 a.m.
No, it's eight.
Okay, very good. 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m.
We don't get up that early, no.
I just wanted to make sure I was hearing correctly.
No, eight to one.
And do you have a rain date?
We do not, unfortunately.
Do you?
So if it's rain, if it rains, we don't do it.
You don't want to add a rain date?
Well, we could, but...
Do you want to do Sunday, the eighth?
We could.
Or the following Saturday?
Probably following Saturday would be the best one. The issue is, is just gathering up the Lions so that we can do that. So, yeah, the following week would work.
We can vote for a rain date, and if you decide that that doesn't work for you, you don't have to do it.
Okay.
But at least this way you don't have to come back.
All right.
Any questions from board members?
Madam Chair.
Selectman Chicalini?
Yeah, they've been doing this for forever, and knock on wood, we've never really, we've never had any issues to, to, to report. I understand, you know, the police department has their own concerns, but for, you take all the precautions, you're cautious, you're careful, you know, and it's for such a great cause, you know, this board has always supported the Lions and what it is you're doing. So I don't, I don't have any issue with this at all.
Thank you, Selectman Chicalini. I agree with Selectman Chicalini, and the Lions Club does phenomenal work, and we appreciate everything that you do, and...
We also thank the public for their support, too.
Any other comments?
No, other than what Selectman Chicalini and yourself said. I know the police department doesn't recommend it for safety issues, but you've been doing it for so long, and you're willing to take the risk, so good luck, I'll support it. Thank you.
With that said, do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair?
Selectman Chicalini?
I'll make a motion that we grant the request to the Saugus Lions for their, to operate their canning drive Saturday, June 7th, 2025, the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And the rain date will be June 14th, same hours, 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And the locations will be Hamilton Street and Central Street, at the Rotary, and the lights at Lynfels Parkway and Main Street. And obviously, as they illustrated, they'll be wearing all their safety vests and using their traffic cones, et cetera, as they have for many years past.
That's seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, Selectman Chicalini, his motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Madam Chair, I need to abstain. I'm a proud Lion, so, but one abstain...
Yeah, we want to hear you roar.
I'm sorry. No, can't do it, can't do it publicly.
You've got to suspend her membership if you won't do the lion roar.
Yeah, money man's over there.
Motion passes. Four in favor, one abstention.
Okay.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Pass the comment.
Thank you. Thank you for the good work you do. It's now time for our first citizen's comment. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to address the board?
Hi, I'm Barbara Duznap, 15 Riverside Court, Saugus. And I just attended the downstairs open meeting of the board for some odds and ends here. And at that discussion, it was, the Stalker Playground was brought up offhandedly, not really mentioned, but it was to say that it was deplorable and that there was vandalism and other things. Well, I've been going there since March 15th with a site visit for the Stalker Playground, and there's been people using that playground and, as it's intended, and using the basketball court and the tennis courts and the playground swing area. And to have you say that the park is deplorable or not being used is because the Town of Saugus has not taken care of that park for decades. The last capital improvement done there was in 1997, and here we are in 2025, and to push an agenda for the dog park, it, it's being used to push the agenda for the, the lack of care down there. And I find that deplorable. So that's my first comment there, and I wanted to answer some questions that one of the board members had down there about a lawsuit going on down there at, for Stalker Playground or anything like that. And to my knowledge, the lawsuit was dismissed for the condition of use, but there's still an outstanding matter of the ownership of 22 Stalker Street, which the town is using in conjunction with Stalker Playground for the construction of the proposed dog park. And I've requested almost every town office in commission here about that matter, is who do we own 22 Stalker Street? Do we have permission to use 22 Stalker Street, which the dog park is, proposed dog park's encroaching upon? And I've gotten no response at all from anyone, except, I take that back, Michael Leveckia, the building commissioner, did call me a few days ago and asked me, you know, what was going on and what my questions were, but he declined to go further, saying it wasn't something he covered in his matter, because we weren't building something on there. So I just want to know what is, what's the, how do I get an answer to this? Because I've been asking this question since March 18th, I believe. I've been trying to find the answer to that, and now I've done a letter brigade to the town, and I still have no response.
Well, you came to our last meeting, Mrs. Duznap, and you asked the same question, and I recommended that you talk with Town Council, because I didn't know the answer. I thought the town owned it personally, but I didn't know the answer definitively, and I recommended that you speak with Town Council.
Well, I've been reading the minutes to some of the, the town meetings, not these meetings, I'm sorry, to the Conservation for February 12th, for the Conservation Commission, where it states that Mr. Sparagge said that there, that we do own 22 Stalker Street. And then when I attended the March 19th meeting at the Conservation Commission, because I spoke at the March 18th Selectmen, Board of Selectmen, and brought up this matter, prior to presentation, Town Council Schomer spoke and tried to address the matter, but he wouldn't say that the town owned the property. He, but he stuck to the condition of use for the property.
I'm sorry, Town Council who?
Jesse.
Schomer.
Oh, Schomer, thank you. I didn't, couldn't hear.
Special counsel.
Yeah, I, I recommended that you speak with Town Council. That's John Vassipoli. That is who I would recommend that you address a question to, and that that was my recommendation at our last meeting as well.
Well, I wrote him a letter and asked him to respond to me. I actually wrote him a letter and said, "I have a concern about this matter." And he has not, that was back in March 30th, I believe. Yes, March 30th, and I haven't heard from him. And now here we are, we're going to have a Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection meeting tomorrow at the park, because some of the others have stood up and said, "We don't want the dog park for the, because of the environmental nature of the Stalker Playground with the tidal river and the marshland and its elevation and everything to the riverbank." And, but now this doesn't solve the matter, that, solve the matter of the Stalker Playground property, but not the matter of the 22 Stalker Street issue. And I don't know how this can go any further when you're going to place a dog park on the property. On, on property that you may or may not own or may or may not have permission for. And I'm just seeking a simple answer, a simple, for months, and I don't, I don't understand. And I know there was an Article 22 for transparency for this town that not one member stood up for, to even vote for it, and, but yet here we are, and I'm asking for transparency. I'm asking to know, do we own it, do we not? And why, and if we don't own it and we don't have permission, why did the town not withdraw its notice of intent for the proposed dog park and put it somewhere else or, or use the property it stated it was using, which is Stalker Playground?
My last words are going to be, well, you have your walkthrough that you just mentioned tomorrow with the DEP, and I'm not sure who's, I'm not invited to that meeting. I don't know who's going to go to that meeting, but why don't you ask that question at the meeting tomorrow? And if you don't get your answer, again, I would strongly recommend that you contact, call John Vassipoli's office and ask to speak with him, and I'm sure that he's abreast of the situation if he received a copy of your email or letter or whatever correspondence you sent to him.
Oh, yes.
Okay? Thank you very much for coming tonight.
But my question, all right, one thing, is, am I going, is Mr. Vassipoli going to answer me, do you think? Or, I mean, is he going to answer the phone? Because I've written him a letter. I've written him a letter. I've asked for a response.
Madam Chairman?
Yes. Selectman Cardiano?
Quick question, maybe some, what is that 22 Stalker Street now?
I'm not sure. I think that it's a legal matter, and I think that the Speaker is trying to debate or make points about a legal argument, and I think that that's what the courts are for, and that's why they filed something in the court. So I just wouldn't get engaged with that. We're represented by council, and I think that that's where it should be left.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Okay.
I, I think that answered your question, Mrs. Duznap, so...
It did, so if I want an answer, I have to go to court. So, but thank you, I, I think I do understand.
I've got a quick question.
Of course, Selectman Serena. I, I don't think that's what he said, but go ahead, Selectman Serena.
So this is a legal matter going on, Mr. Manager?
It's been ongoing, yeah.
Oh, okay.
I think there's been appeals, I mean, which is public, they've, there's been appeals to the DEP. There's been a suit that's been filed in land court, and I think there was like a dismissal, but without prejudice. There's attorneys involved, so I think it's something that probably shouldn't be, you know, spoken about publicly. If you have any questions, I think I would advise the board to contact John, you know, the Town Council as well.
Okay, thank you.
So now it's time for our first public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Saugus Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing for a special permit on the request of owner-manager Nancy Waits, 288 Vane Street, Riviera, Mass. 02151. The name of the business is Glitz Beauty Bar Lashes, Permanent Makeup, Injectables, Lifts, Tints, Waxing, and Threading. Must be a long sign. Business location, 5 Broadway, Unit 203, Unit 1, Saugus, Mass. This public hearing will be held in the Saugus Town Hall Auditorium, Saugus, Mass., on May 8th, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. Is the applicant here? Hello? Would you please come to the podium and give your name and address, please?
Hi. My name is Nancy, and my business address is 5 Broadway in Saugus.
Could you tell us a little bit about the business? How long you've been doing this type of work? If this is granted, when you plan to be open? Just some general information, please?
Okay, so I've been an esthetician for about seven years. I've hold multiple licenses, certificates in the business that I practice. My primary focus is lash extensions and permanent makeup, and then just to work as soon as possible.
And what are the hours of operation that you're looking for?
So 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday, Tuesday, Friday, Saturday.
So are you going to be closed Wednesday, Thursday, and Sunday?
Yes.
All right. Madam Chair?
Selectman Chicalini?
Just, I just want to confirm, the letter that you submitted had Monday, Monday, 9 to 5:30, Tuesday through Friday, 9 to 7, every other Thursday, 9 to 3, and Saturday, 9 to 6.
Oh, we just do one blanket.
Yes, so I just figured I'd give like a generalization, so I'm not like listing every single date, but that is accurate.
Is it easier for us to just do 9 to 7? And you, if you, if you're open a little bit less or whatever, then...
Yeah, the, the thing is, with my business...
I agree.
I go appointment-based, so sometimes the hours are a little bit different.
Yeah, so if we just did 9 to 7?
Yeah.
That would give you flexibility, too. So if you wanted an extra hour from these other hours that you listed, you won't have to come back to change your hours?
Okay.
Does that, that would work?
It's Monday through Saturday, right?
Yep. Not Sundays?
No, Sundays.
Yeah, this way, if you want to be open on a, a day, maybe you want to be open on a Wednesday, maybe one of your clients want to come on a different day, it will give you the flexibility for you to expand your business.
Okay.
Are there any other questions from board members? When do you plan to open if you're granted this license?
As soon as possible.
Do you have to build out the space, or is it already kind of...
It's all done. I did have to make some improvements to the space. I installed sinks so I could get my license for permanent makeup. I did flooring, I painted the walls, furniture, all that kind of stuff.
Any other questions? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak either in favor or opposed to this application? Seeing none? Can I please have a motion to close the public hearing?
Madam Chair?
Selectman Chicalini?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
And that is seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Chicalini's motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries 5 to 0. Selectman Chicalini?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we grant the request for a special permit by Nancy Waits, who would be the owner-manager, 288 Vane Street, Riviera, Mass., for Glitz Beauty Bar Lashes, Permanent Makeup, Injectables, Lifts, Tints, Waxing, and Threading. Business location, 5 Broadway, Unit 203, Building 1, in Saugus. Hours of operation, Monday through Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. I did not see any other recommendations in the file from our building inspector, anybody, so I think that's all I had.
Okay, and that is seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, this does require a roll call vote, because it is a special permit. Meredith, would you please call the roll, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion carries 5 to 0. Congratulations and good luck to you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Do I need to do anything else? Like get any paperwork picked up at any of the offices or...
Yeah, you'll need to get the special permit. We need to sign it, and you're going to get that from the office, you're going to get that from Meredith. And I assume you've, by reading the documents, you've already talked with the Board of Health?
Yes, I have everything already, yep.
Okay, very good.
So do I pick it up on a separate date or today?
Meredith will give you a call when we all sign the permit. You can pick it up in the office.
Okay. All right, thank you.
At your convenience.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Have a good night.
Our second public hearing of the night. Notice is hereby given that the Saugus Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing under the Town Traffic Rules and Regulations, Article 5, Stopping, Standing, Parking, Article 5, Section 1J, to install two no parking signs across from the Essex Street Fire Station. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this, this evening? In the back? Anyone at all who's sitting in the back row?
Looks like you drew this, the short straw.
If you could please give your name and address and discuss the request a little bit.
Name's Tom Nolan, 5 Harvard Ave., Member Local 103, Saugus Firefighters. First, I'd like to apologize to the board, Mr. Town Manager. I'm not dressed appropriate to address you. I wasn't expecting...
Can you, can you lift the microphone up a little bit?
Yeah, you're tall, so you need to...
I just apologize for my attire, dressing up tonight. Wasn't expecting to be speaking.
Anthony told me he was going to be here. Where is he?
But the problem we're having, we're having problems responding to and returning from alarms. They're parking across from the station, so we're having a hard time backing the truck in, which is making a more of a traffic jam. And when we're pulling out, because of the cars parked on... And when we're pulling out, because of the cars parked on both sides and traffic going, the cars don't have a safe area to pull over for us to allow us to get out. So that's a double meaning of that space across the street from the station. Just, you're all aware of the situation now, which is, I guess, no good deed goes unpunished, you know? It's good, we've got so many people there using the park after the board and Mr. Managers. Who would have thought that many people played pickleball? It wasn't me. You know, and then when you get the families coming in there, everybody's passionate about their kids. They want to get there on time. Everybody's running around, so there's a lot going on there. By clearing that area across from the station, allow us safely to get in and out quicker. That's the purpose behind this.
Thank you. We do understand the need. Do board members have any questions? Selectman Chicalini.
Madam Chair, just for clarification, so I understood it was only the two spots, but there's also a concern about the spot in front of the two spots where they're almost encroaching on the crosswalk as well, right?
Correct. I mean, I've showed the safety officer, and you've all looked at it. Right now, across the street between the, is where we're talking right now.
Yeah, so we'll have to monitor it. We'll have to keep an eye on it. If you think that we have to revisit making that whole, from the actual crosswalk down instead of just the two spots, we may want to consider.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, the more room we have, especially when we're pulling out, the cars have no place to go.
Absolutely. And they're also parking in some of the firefighter spots and.
On the side, people see like a few empty spaces that are designated for the fire department. That's our mutual aid engine. When that goes out of town, we've got guys coming in, getting recalled. You know, they're coming in with their gear, and they need places to park and go in and man the spare engine while the other engine's out of town.
Do we have adequate signage there for the?
The signage could be updated.
So I'm going to make that as part of my motion as well. I'm going to make that that we also improve the signage to make sure that you have appropriate parking around the building.
We appreciate that. Anything the board and Mr. Manager can do to help us, I'll greatly appreciate it.
Mr. Town Manager.
So Captain Nolan, it might be very helpful if you could just do a Google map and highlight exactly the spots you want, so that when it gets, I set it up to the DPW, it doesn't get lost in translation. That's really helpful, if you can just highlight on a Google map exactly where you want the no-parking.
Absolutely, whatever you need.
Because we may even, depending on the situation, if it's possible, we might, you know, even paint a yellow curb or whatever if we think it's appropriate.
We understand there's a lot of factors, though.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Madam Chairman.
Selectman Serena.
I agree with Selectman Chicalini. When I drove down to take a look at it, that's the first thing that came to my mind. I thought that spot from the crosswalk to School Street should also be included. I think it's.
We'd appreciate it, yes.
I think it's dangerous coming out of School Street and for people using the real trail. I would support that tonight if you wanted to. The three spots, to be honest with you.
Is there further discussion? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak either in favor or opposed to this application? If you'd like to come up to the podium, sure. If you could please just give your name and address for the record.
Steve Miranda, 21 Walnut, Saugus, Mass. Just the crosswalk's not painted either. Maybe you can look into that. When they dug the road up, that's not there either.
I think it got painted today or last night.
Oh, it did?
So, yeah.
I'll be in Friday.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Seeing none, what are the wishes of the board?
Madam Chair.
Selectman Chicalini.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
That's seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Chicalini's motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5 to 0. Selectman Chicalini.
Madam Chair, I'm going to make a motion that we update the Town Traffic Rules and Regulations, Article 5. And we install no-parking signs appropriately to block off the three spots directly across from the Essex Street Fire Station. I'll leave it up to public safety and the town manager and DPW to decide if they're going to paint the, the, across the.
Curbs.
Thank you, yellow or not. But I also think as part of this, we want to make sure to handle the parking, make sure we have updated signage around the building, around the current building, to make sure that the spots reserved for firefighters are properly reserved as needed.
And that is seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion?
So Madam Chairman, I think it might be easier to say the two, the spots in front of the fire station up to School Street.
Absolutely.
I think that'd be more clearer.
Yep, so the spots from, in front of the fire station up to the School Street location, you know, so they don't encroach on the crosswalk.
Thank you.
Okay, and that is seconded by the Chair, and we're into discussion. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Chicalini's motion with the amendment by Selectman Serena, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5 to 0. Thank you.
Madam Chair, just for background information, when we pave that pavement, there's always a delay when the crosswalks and whatnot get repainted, because they have to wait for the oils to come up from the newer asphalt. So just so, you know, everybody understands that. So sometimes it takes a little while after the oil sort of surfaces, and then they're able to paint. Otherwise, the paint won't stick on the asphalt. But I think it was done last night, because I drove by it, I think, today. So, if not, it'll be done soon, but I'm almost positive it was done today.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's now time for our third public hearing of the evening. Notice is hereby given that the Saugus Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing of the Town Traffic Rules and Regulations to limit Pierce Memorial Drive to one-way traffic during certain times. The hearing will be held at the Saugus Town Hall, 2nd floor auditorium, May 20th at 7:05 PM. I see some people in the audience who would like to speak on this. Would you, I don't know who wants to go first, but if you could please come to the podium and give your name and address just for the record. And I'll just quickly mention that it was at the SBC meeting where this was first discussed, and you could take it from there.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity. Carla Scuzzarella, 8 Car Road. I also happen to be the principal of the Saugus Middle High School. Couple of concerns. The traffic is brutal. At various times of the day, we're working really hard to take care of that. But the fact that the two streets that come to the building, Pierce Memorial and Highland, both are one-way in the afternoon from 1:30 till 5:00. And it's the 5:00 that is a concern for me. I noticed that the streets around the Belmonte, the traffic only goes till 3:00 and makes those streets one-way. So I am respectfully asking for the board to consider making Pierce Memorial and Highland one-way from 1:30 till 3:00. And the reason is, the building gets out at 2:15. The vast amount of traffic that comes with that is gone by quarter of 3:00. And I'm finding that students who then stay after school on the high school side of the building and that do drive, I wouldn't want to admit this too many times, but some of them do ignore the one-way sign because they live in that area. Or they live over near the Belmonte, and they are now forced to go out Pierce, get in all the traffic, and at 3:00, the traffic on Main Street is bad, because we've become a cut-through. You know, Saugus is like, we just drive through to get to wherever we're going on the lin end of things. And so I'm either forcing my students to get out onto Route 1. Worst drivers in town should not be pulling out onto Route 1 in traffic. Go onto Main Street and add to the traffic. And the other piece that's a concern for me is anything that we have happening at the building between 3:00 and 5:00 involving visiting schools of any type. And I'm thinking mostly of athletic events, but our drama group had various practices that had to take place there when we hosted the Drama Fest. And schools have to literally drive by the school and then come down those side streets with the buses to get to the building for a competition of any type, whether it be one of our activities or one of our athletic programs. So if, I think I understand when the building was new and people were trying to figure out how all that traffic around the school was going to be. And also, we certainly wanted to discourage people from parking on particularly Highland, and I think we've done a good job with that. The community's been really supportive of no parking on that street during the school day. And I do think it's time to maybe take a look at the changing of the 5:00 to 3:00. And I also do understand the neighborhood's concerns, but people for, before five years ago, people drove down there all the time. Because, you know, Pierce was two-way. You came down and you took a left onto Highland. And if you live over near the Belmonte or in Cliftondale, it is easier than going through Saugus Center. There's no doubt about that. And as we've gotten more and more traffic that goes on Main Street, it definitely is easier than going down to Main Street into the center, get on Central, and go to East Saugus or Cliftondale or wherever. So I'm asking for consideration of that change, just to put us on the same par with Belmonte and allow for people visiting the school between 3:00 and 5:00 to have the opportunity to not have to go completely all around to Vine Street and then take the right onto Highland to get to the school.
Madam Chair.
I have no problem at all with this. The only issue is that when this was posted, it says, this was a posting from when the signs were changed the last time. But it says, limiting Pierce Memorial Drive, and we don't have Highland Ave. on here. So we could vote on Pierce Memorial Drive tonight.
To do Highland.
But we could do that tonight, but I think that we may need to, and I'll ask my fellow board members their thoughts on this. Because this is what, this was what we voted on the last time, because I had Meredith go back and take a look. But as we're reading this through, I'm thinking that I'm just being sensitive to the Highland Ave. folks. You have any thoughts, Selectman Cardliano?
Just a question for clarification. So you're asking, right now, it's 1:00 to 5:00?
1:30 to 5:00.
1:30 to 5:00.
And we get out at 2:15. So 1:30 is appropriate. I think that's a good message. It makes sure that the traffic is all going one-way in the afternoon, especially for parents with pickup. But at 3:00, it's a ghost town, except for the kids who are there for extracurriculars. I don't have any buses that come in the afternoon unless they're returning from an event. And you're really talking about student drivers and family pickup that might come between 3:00 and 5:00, being forced to go out onto Main Street and come around that way, or then exit that way also, instead of being able to pull out of the parking lot near the stadium and take a right onto Highland.
And that's one way going from the end of Highland to Main Street?
To Vine. You're talking about Pierce. Pierce is one-way from the school.
School, to Main Street, okay.
And Highland is one-way from Vine Street to the school from 1:30 to 5:00.
So, just.
Selectman Chicalini.
Madam Chair, so I understand the way it was advertised with Pierce. It's the tough part, I mean, we actually had a recommendation specifically stating Highland. So, I mean, I guess we'd have to re-advertise and do the Highland separately. But we do have the recommendations that, you know, even Chairman of the School Committee's conversation in here is also mentions the one-way being Highland, on Highland Ave. as well. So, you know, I hate to have to have them come back, but I think it's the right thing to do.
Yeah, I agree with you.
For legalities, because somebody will challenge it.
Well, I, people live on Highland. No one lives on Pierce.
Right.
Except me. And the school. But I totally understand, and people should have an opportunity in that, on that street if they have feelings to express. They should certainly have that opportunity.
Thank you. It's certainly a common sense request. I agree with it. I think the people on Highland Ave. would be happy to not have to go around and come and go to their homes a certain way. But, yeah, we do probably do need to advertise that for Highland Ave., but I would support this tonight for Pierce Memorial. Thank you.
Is there further discussion? Okay. Mr. Serena, would you like to say a few words? You're going to just say the, okay. You're just in the audience. I wanted to give you the opportunity to speak if you would like to speak. If you could please give your name and address, please?
Anna Maria Brandal Libo, 35 Hilltop Avenue. I totally support the principal's request. My son goes to the, was in the middle, and right now, he goes to the Malden Catholic. And the traffic right there is chaos. And the ending time to 3:00 or even 3:30, like your recommendation is 5:00, right? But it was like when? Five years ago, 10 years ago, when the project was on? So I totally, as a parent, that my son goes there, totally support the request.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Madam Chairman.
Selectman Riley.
Through you, seeing that the other one would be able, would have to be re-advertized. I just have a question, because I was in that traffic last week. And coming off the ramp of Main Street, all right, so coming off the highway to go Main Street, years ago, you used to be able, there was a sign that you could take a right, no, I'm sorry, a left, and not keep going right off the, off the on-ramp, off-ramp. So then there was the double line, because that's a state street. But the sign was taken down, not to, the allowance of taking a left onto Main Street from the off-ramp. So is it legal or isn't legal? Because when I was sitting there, there was a car that took a left onto Main off the ramp, and the kids were getting out of school, and they were still trying, they shouldn't be, but they were crossing there. And this guy, this driver had taken a left to go onto Main. Are you following where I'm at with the?
I know exactly where you are, but I'll go back up.
I don't know if that's a legal left turn any longer, or is it, should a sign be put there that they can't go left? I'm not sure. I just figured I'd bring that up, that this is, we're talking about that area.
I popped back up here, apologize. This just came into my head. I think that the sign, we were talking about signage near the fire station. I think the signage on those two areas is not great. It's small, the lettering is small, the do-not-enter is in, you know, if the police are on Main Street, no one's taking a left coming out of Pierce, trust me. And no one takes a right in there in the morning if the police are there. But there are people who sneak down at 10 past 7:00 or whatever, and it's surprising for the people that have now formed the two lanes to exit. They can go left out of Pierce at 2:15, 2:30, because that's the only way. They can go right or left there. So I think the sign at the end of the Pierce on either side should somehow be more visible. I find it not to be visible enough for the people that are driving. And I also think if we're going to make an effort to change the time, the signs for Highland also need to be a little bit bigger and the lettering a little bit bigger, so that people clearly can see it's a do-not-enter from 1:30 to, say, 3:00. And that after that, it's fine. It's two-way again. I mean, the traffic moves. It's just, there's a lot. And, you know, I've only been there a few months, so I haven't quite figured out how I can make it possibly smoother. But we're working on that, and we've got a pattern of people dropping off behind the, you know, going around behind the building over to the middle school, et cetera. I just have to figure out a better system, and maybe we start too close to when the Belmonte starts. Because many people drop off there and then shoot over to the middle high school. And it's convenient, but it adds to the craziness around that building in the morning especially. The afternoon's not as bad, but it's a lot of traffic. And you jump in onto Main Street where we already have people coming off the highway. And sometimes in the morning, that's backed up, you know, down that right-hand lane a bit. Because as people are turning, having to go past the building, now everybody's on Main Street to Vine Street. I've been in that traffic sometimes, if I've had to come late or do something same as you. But I do think people can go left out of Pierce in the morning and the afternoon when it's one-way. It just, it's challenging, you know, taking a left out of Pierce. I try to encourage the adults to go out onto the highway if they need to take a left. Go out, get on Route 1, and get off at the ramp, going under the overpass, and head off onto Upper Main or wherever they're heading. off onto Upper Main or wherever they're heading. It's easier than fighting the traffic at the end of the street, because there isn't always a police officer available.
Thank you.
So, the signage, if, when you do this, could consider that, too, please respectfully? I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions from board members? Okay. So, I just mentioned this is a public hearing. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak either in favor or opposed to this application? Seeing none, what are the wishes of the board?
Madam Chairman.
Selectman Cogliano.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
And that's seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, Selectman Cogliano's motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Selectman Cogliano.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we have a one-way on Pierce Memorial Drive, heading from the end of Highland Ave towards Main Street from one PM, one thirty PM to three PM, Monday through Friday.
And that is seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Selectman Chicalini.
Just if it's okay with Selectman Cogliano, I just want to do an addendum, that we also ask that they update the signage, just for clarity, and maybe consider having the two signs, one on each side of Pierce Memorial.
Thank you.
That's fine.
Okay. So, all those in favor of Selectman Cogliano's motion with Vice Chair Chicalini's addendum, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries five to zero. And what we will do is, on our June tenth meeting, we will post something very similar to what we had today for Highland Ave. Okay? Sound good to members?
Yep.
Perfect. Thank you, thank you all for coming, I appreciate it, and I thought it was important that you came and you explained it.
We'll see you on the tenth.
We'll just play a video of what you said, and we'll insert Highland Ave, instead of Pierce.
Our fourth public hearing of the night. Notice is hereby given that the Saugus Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on the request, Citywide Transportation Group, Inc., Eight Pranker Road, Saugus, Mass., for a taxi livery license, owner Michael Marmiani. Hi, I assume that you are the applicant.
Michael Marmiani, Eight Pranker Road.
Thank you. And can you tell us a little bit about what you'd like to do?
School pupil transportation for special needs children.
Can you tell me how, at what time in the morning you'll be out, what time you'll be coming back, how many times you'll be going in and out of your road?
Sure, just normal school operating hours, so, maybe six-thirty in the morning till three or four in the afternoon. And, that's pretty much it.
And they'll just be one vehicle?
Yes.
And can you tell us what kind of vehicle that'll be?
It's a six-passenger vehicle, and then a driver and a monitor, so, it's a Mercedes-Benz Metris. Just a mid-sized vehicle.
Thank you. Board members have questions?
Madam Chair.
Selectman Chicalini.
Just want to verify with the applicant, you know that we'll, this, if we approve this, it'll be for one vehicle only.
Correct, yes.
I only received, I'm not sure if the whole board received, I only received one letter of concern from one of the neighbors. They just wanted to make sure that it was just one vehicle, the town only allows one vehicle, and the size of the vehicle, and how many times you're going to be coming in and out of the street.
And the police department recommends that it be parked in the driveway, not out. Police department recommends it be parked out in the driveway, not out in the street.
Correct, yes. Thank you.
So, if there aren't any more questions from board members, this is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak either in favor or opposed to this application? Seeing none, what are the wishes of the board?
Madam Chair.
Selectman Cogliano?
Nope, me.
Oh, I'm sorry, Selectman Chicalini. I just heard very slight Madam Chair.
A little shorter. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
And that's seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Chicalini's motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Selectman Chicalini.
I will make a motion that we grant the request of Citywide Transportation Group, Inc., at Eight Pranker Road in Saugus for the taxi livery license. It'll be for one vehicle, the owner being Michael Marmiani, and this will be one vehicle to be parked in the driveway when not in use.
And that is seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion?
Madam Chairman.
Selectman Cogliano.
I just want to say I'll support the motion. I've known Mr. Marmiani for quite some time, and I'm sure he's going to do the right thing.
Very good. So, with that said, all those in favor of Selectman Chicalini's motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Good luck.
Good luck to you, thank you for coming tonight.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is under new business. This is just a general liquor license discussion, and what you have in front of you is the quota breakdown from the ABCC, the Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission. And, what I wanted to talk about tonight was the all-alcoholic licenses. It says the total available quota is four. The four that they say that we have is the one that Palos never went and got their license, they never went, put in all the paperwork, the ninety-nine, which we'll be trying to get back, La Vida Mira that we're trying to get back, and Longhorn, who recently gave us back their license. So, those are the four that the ABCC sees as being available. What we really have available is, we do have the Longhorn one, and we do have the Palos one, because they didn't fill out their paperwork. But, we hope to get the ninety-nine and the La Vida Mira. I see those as low-hanging fruit, because the ABCC doesn't see that they're, that they have a license, they have not submitted their money into the town. It doesn't seem right that they get to hold on to a license, and we can't get that back. And, I've been working with the town manager, I've been working with the town manager, and he's been working with Ira, our special counsel, because I'd like to bring in whoever hasn't been using their license for the past year or two, so that we could have those hearings. Because, you know, we're losing out on revenue if, if people have pocket licenses. So, what I think we could do as the board, if the board wants to do this, is just like we did the last time, when we had the two licenses available, and again, we know we will be getting back the ninety-nine Olivia Mira soon, so I would feel comfortable advertising that we have two all-alcoholic licenses available, and we could do what we did the last time, we'll put it on cable, we'll put it in the paper, and then we'll see who comes before us, and perhaps we can give out those two all-alcoholic licenses. What do board members think?
Madam Chair.
Selectman Chicalini.
So, the only hesitation I have on the licenses, in talking with the owner of the Palos, it does look like they will be reopening, and they're going to look to also obtain the liquor license that we had previously granted. So, I'm not saying that we would, we would hold it specifically, but I would say that first priority should go to someone that's already met the qualifications previously, and I think it would be a real big addition to that specific restaurant, in order for competition purposes, to be able to serve on a full liquor license.
Well, I agree with you that we all voted in favor of Palos, because we thought they could use the all-alcoholic liquor license, they were a going concern, and a wonderful restaurant. So, Selectman Chicalini, what would you then recommend in terms of having?
I would recommend we advertise one available, and we give them, you know, sixty days to see their quota about opening up, and the word has it, they're going to open fairly quickly, so.
So, would you like to do the advertisement now for one?
That would be my recommendation, yes.
How do board members feel about that?
I agree, yes.
Madam Chairman.
Selectman Cogliano.
I'm just going to abstain from that, where I'm the landlord at Palos.
Sure.
Okay.
But, why don't we then, because I have been getting inquiries, there's been quite a few of them actually, looking for all-alcoholic and beer and wine. We'll talk about beer and wine in a second, but I don't know how to respond to these inquiries, and that's the reason why I thought it was important to bring it up as a discussion point tonight. So, why don't we then advertise for the one, and we could either, we could do it the second meeting in June, or the first meeting in July?
I think first meeting in July, to make sure that the advertisement's out there and people are, you know, have time to.
So, we'll have the meeting, so we'll have the hearing in July, and perhaps we can hear at that time, I mean, it would be great if we could also have those show cause hearings, again, at least, for, I call them low-hanging fruit, I mean, the ninety-nine and the, because you know it's not going to open, because Cannabis Place is going there, and La Vida Mira is something else now, and they're not, they've been closed for a long time, so. The other two, the beer and wine, those two, one is Angelo's Pizza, that would, it'd be great if we could get that one back, unless the place that's there is going to need it. And then we also have where Out of Asia was, but they gave that one back, so technically we have one. And, the restaurant that's there now, were, they already have, are their paperwork in, right, Meredith? They, because, they worked to try to get that license back, but I don't know, it doesn't mean that they necessarily get the one license, but they have worked on trying to get it back, so, and it makes it a little bit of an uncomfortable situation. So, how would the board members like to handle that? Selectman Chicalini.
Just a quick question, I'm not sure if you know this off the top of your head, or if Meredith does. The available licenses include Palos not renewing the beer and wine license that they had? They didn't, so that's, that's included in the two available?
Should be three.
I'm wondering if that number should, I'm wondering if that number should be three instead of two, I don't know if that caught up yet.
I thought that that was for, I know Out of Asia's in there, because they weren't in there, and the last time I looked, Angelo's Cold File Pizza wasn't in there either.
Right.
So, those were the two.
So, if Palos is available, we would have three, because Palos would be going for the full liquor.
That's right. They would have to return their license, but the question is, if they didn't get the all-alcoholic license, I don't know.
They had a beer and wine before the all-alcoholic.
Right. Was it you or Janice who filled out the form to the ABCC at the beginning of this year? Okay, did you, because you did put down who did not renew. Did you? That's okay, we'll find out. Why don't we, you want to hold off on that? Why don't we hold off on that, but we'll still do the advertisement for the all-alcoholic, and we'll put that in for July, and I'm going to keep working with the town manager, through him, with special counsel, with, working with Ira, because I, again, I don't like to have pocket licenses out there. I'd really like to get those back, and give them to restaurants, it will make those restaurants, hopefully, that much more profitable, and if they're more profitable, the town's more profitable with the mail stack, so it's a win-win.
Okay, sounds good.
Any other conversation around that topic? Okay, thank you all. The next item is.
Mr. Manager, you're up.
Town Manager's Report.
The time walking to the podium is coming off your manager's report time.
And Mr. Town Manager, I just want to thank you for the update earlier tonight.
You're welcome. So, I only have a couple of quick things to inform the public of and the board, just a reminder, we are in the, in the water meter replacement program, we're fully into that, we're doing a lot of the commercial buildings, as well as the town buildings, and they will be starting shortly, sending notices out to different areas in the town to residents about making an appointment. It's a mandatory program, the meters have to be replaced, there is no cost to the residents. Again, the huge benefit is having a portal, customer portal, resident portal, that will allow you on an app on your phone to be able to set parameters and notices and alerts, so if there's water usage that increases, boom, it'll let you know that there's a problem before six months goes by and you have a problem. If you've got a leaky bathroom, or a bathroom that you don't use anymore, because your kids are at college, or, you know, you're just not using it, and you don't even know you have a leak in there. So, this is going to be, I think, really phenomenal, you know, improvement, enhancement into the technology for the residents. This is all going to be on a gateway system, so there's no more manual driving around and trying to get the signal from your meter, this will all be through the internet wirelessly to a system, and so I think this is pretty good for the residents, there'll be no, no charge, free of charge, and, you know, another big thing is, and I think we've talked about this, using the American Rescue Monies Act federally to be able to fund this, it's a six-million-dollar project that will not impact the water and sewer rates at this time, so I think that's really good as well. But, there is a, if you go on, online, we've all put notices out, we've had in the paper, and we also did a video recently, that should be out either today or tomorrow, notifying people and just giving some more information, and you can call and get as much information you want, but be prepared for that. People have identification, they'll have trucks, the whole thing, so the video explains it, and it's pretty good information, so please be on the lookout for that. Also, just one other thing, Saugus Trash Recycling Collection is going to be running one-day delay for Memorial Day holiday, where, as everybody's aware, trash and recycling will not be collected on Monday, May twenty-six, 2025, due to the holiday. Collection will resume on a one-day delay on Tuesday, May twenty-seventh. Residents are kindly asked to leave their trash and recycling curbside by seven AM the day after their normally scheduled collection day. Town of Saugus would like to thank everyone for their cooperation. So, we have this online, as well as the schedule, so that when you get the calls that say, "Do you know if they're picking up trash on the holiday, any holiday?" We do not pick up trash on holidays. It's always a one-day delay, and it's online with a calendar, and we put press releases out and notices, so hopefully people are receiving those text notices, we have an increase in people subscribing to that, so that's a very good thing. So, hopefully, we put this on cable as well, and hopefully we get to, get as many people that are willing to listen that'll get the information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Do, board members have any questions for our Town Manager tonight? Thank you. Moving on to approval of minutes, first set of minutes to approve are the April first, 2025 minutes. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
That's seconded by the Chair. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Serena's motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries five to zero. The next set of minutes are April fifteenth, 2025. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Selectman Cogliano made a motion to approve those minutes. The Chair seconds, is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Cogliano's motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries five to zero. The next set of minutes are May thirteenth, 2025, that was our eight o'clock AM meeting, those were our sore minutes. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, and that's seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Selectman Riley's motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you all. The next item on the agenda is under appointments. Mr. Randolph-Bryant requests to be reappointed as the Saugus Veterans Grave Officer, and this is for a term to expire May thirty-first, 2026.
So, Madam Chair.
And that is seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Chicalini's motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. It is now time for our second citizen's comments. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to address the board? Seeing none, we'll move on to members' comments, and Selectman Riley, I'd start with you, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
The Saugus Business Education Collaborative will be holding the Unsung Hero Awards on Wednesday, March twenty-eighth. These awards are to recognize students that show academic effort, character, maturity, school citizenship, and contribution to the community. Congratulations to all the upcoming recipients. This Friday, May twenty-third, at Riverside Cemetery, will be the annual flagging of the grave sites of those men and women who served in the military. If you are able to volunteer, be at the cemetery at three PM near the veterans' plots. There's a lot of flagging that needs to be done, so the more people we have. There's a lot of flagging that needs to be done, so the more people we have, the easier it will be. The Memorial Day Parade this year is this coming Saturday, May 24. The route will be from Anna Parker through Cliftondale Square, left on, to Central Street, right on Winter, to Veterans Plot, to the ceremony remembering those who paid the ultimate sacrifice for our country. It begins at 10:00 AM. Please come out and line the streets to watch the parade. I'd like to thank the town manager, Brendan O'Regan, and the DPW for getting the cemetery ready for the Memorial Day services at Veterans Park. Truly appreciated. I'd like to thank Debbie Faust, Joe Dion, Donald Wong, Jeanne Bartolo, Wendy, excuse me, Randy Briand, and Vinnie Serino for making the outing for those who came to watch the Wounded Vet Run this past Sunday, going past Veterans Park a great time. Thank you to all that rode to raise the funds to help the veterans who were wounded. They picked for two that were wounded in Afghanistan. As we heard earlier, the Lions Club will be canning June 7, Saturday, 8:00 AM to noon. It's a great fundraiser, helping the Lions' continued mission to support eye research. And to everybody, have a safe and happy Memorial Day. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Selectman Riley. Selectman Cogliano?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I would just like to thank the manager and the DPW for keeping World Series Park going and keep it, keeping it tip-top. It's, it's been trying down this, this year without Bob Davis. Bob has been ill, and we hope to get him back soon and get that part fully operational. But thank you, Mr. Manager, for keeping it going. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Selectman Cogliano.
You're welcome.
Selectman Serino.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I want to thank everybody who participated in Student Government Day. The entire board of selectmen was there, town manager, Vinnie Serino, Tom Whitridge of the school committee, Superintendent Mike Hashem, town moderator Steve Doherty, and several town meeting members also attended. I want to especially thank all the students who participated. I believe we had about 35, 40 students here. That is a big turnout. And I'd like to give a special shout-out to Deb yourself and Ms. Prizzo, who organized the event. You did a great job. And I hope everybody turns out for the Memorial Day Parade Saturday. And I also want to shout-out to Mr. Frank McKinnon. Frank was a conservation officer in town for 40-plus years, and he's retiring for being a conservation officer. He's retiring, but he is staying on the Conservation Commission, and I want to wish him all the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Selectman Serino. And Selectman Vice Chair Chicalini.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to wish everybody a happy and safe Memorial Day. Hope everybody comes down for the parade to show their respects and pay their respects and, and their support for our veterans and those that have paid the sacrifice. And just to the Town Manager, through you, to the DPW. It seems like a lot of calls constantly coming through, and somehow they get it done, so just kudos to them, and if you could pass that along.
I will.
That's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Selectman Chicalini. I just have a few things. I wanted to remind everybody that the Saugus Iron Works Summer Concert Series is going to start up again on July 9. And they have it at 6:00, and it's right over at, in the iron works. It's going to start off with Coco Brown and the invitation, and it's going to end every Wednesday through August 27, and it will be ending with Jump Street. It's a lot of fun. Come on out, bring a picnic basket. There's going to be quite a few people there, and everybody really enjoys themselves.
What's the date that that starts?
It starts on July 9. They, they work with the Saugus Library to fund it.
Yes.
And it's really, it's a wonderful take.
Right.
I, I want to piggyback on what Selectman Serino said about Frank McKinnon. I asked him at his retirement get-together, "How long have you been the conservation officer?" And he said, "Well, it's been over 30 years." He's, he's been, but he was a member even before that, and as Selectman Serino said, he wants to stay on as a member. But he's given so much back for the town, and if it's okay with the board, I'd like to bring him in for a citation. Does, does everybody agree?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes.
I just, I just think that he's done so much, and he was very sweet, and he said, he goes, "I don't want to retire. It was my son who wants me to retire. I want to keep working for the town. I love my town." So it was, it was very, very sweet, and he's such a dedicated man. The Gardening Club is actually celebrating its 80th anniversary in Saugus. 80 years is a long time. And I'd also like to bring them and none of the same night, of course, to give them a citation and recognize them, if that's okay.
Sure.
Okay with the board. They had a great event last Wednesday. They have the annual fundraiser here. Every seat was filled, and they had a demonstration, and they do do a lot for the town.
Yeah, Madam Chairman, I did pop up to the time they had here last week. I was surprised all the people that showed up. There had to be close about 80 people here, and they, it was nice.
It was standing room only.
Yeah.